Hi, this is the town accord of Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 23, 2023. Please call it a roll.
Commissioner Kenny? Commissioner Boshier? Chair Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Bandell?
Here.
And Commissioner Vice Chair Rizzo? Is absent.
All right, thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So right now, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on the agenda. Being that there is no one in the room, that would mean Tracy must have somebody online.
No one online has raised their hand.
Okay. So that's the end of the open public comment session. So then we'll go directly to our consent calendar, which is, item A, the only item is 436 Cora Madera Town Center Resolution 23-011, approving permit amendment application PL 23-015 to amend the previously approved signed permit design review for a new illuminated wall sign and replacement of black awnings with magenta awnings at the T-Mobile store at 436 Cora Madera Town Center. We can approve this? Someone makes a motion, or if someone wants to pull it for discussion, we can do that.
I'll move.
Okay. Second by Valerie, okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Kenny? Commissioner Boshier?
Favor.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rizzo. A motion carries four to zero.
All right, thank you. So now we are going to talk at length about the 2023 to 2031 housing element update. Even the description is daunting. So it is public hearing to consider recommendations to the Cora Madera Town Council to, one, adopt a resolution repealing the 2015 through 2023 Cora Madera Housing Element and adopting the 2023 through 2020 31 Cora Madera Housing Element update and adopt a resolution confirming that the Town Council's findings and conclusions regarding the final SEIR and certification thereof in Town Council Resolution of the second of February?
February 20.
January 20 applies to the proposed safety element update and adopting the update to the safety element, including changes to Chapter 7, flooding and floodplain management, and Chapter 8, Public Safety and Hazards, to the 2009 Cora Madera General Plan. So we've got a lot to talk about, but who's going to start this off for tonight?
I will start this one off. Thank you, Chair Chase, members of the Planning Commission. It is with great enthusiasm that we are here tonight to finally be able to present this item to the Planning Commission. I won't go through the actions that you just so eloquently stated are before you this evening. But I do want to first just start a little bit of overview of what we're going to do tonight. I'll give an introduction and then hand presentation over to Martha to discuss the housing element. I'll be talking more about the background. We have obviously Martha Vitale here, who really this this effort really would wasn't, hasn't been possible without her tireless effort and really seeing this project through to today. Right there yet, as you've seen in the staff report, but we're getting, we're getting closer and closer by the day, and also want to recognize Christina O'Rourke, who's sitting to my right. Who's been our consultant on our housing element update and really advising us through the process and also pulling all of the information into the actual document that you see before you. I also want to recognize as part of this process, our consultants who assisted us with public outreach throughout this entire last two years of work planned to place led by Dave Javid. They're not here this evening, but they've been, Dave and his team have been with us throughout this process with putting information out to our community regarding the plan and all of our trying to solicit input into this document. And really has been a real, I think, really positive collaboration between all of us through this process. So just excited to have all of us here this evening and some of us here. Maybe more, Dave's not obviously here with us tonight, but he's been closely working with us and will be present at the council meeting. Also, and Danforth, who's obviously sitting somewhere else, but I can see your face. And so thanks for all your help as well. Especially as it relates to the SEIR document, which was prepared and again, another consultant effort there with EMC Planning Incorporated, who is our consultant for the SEIR document. So having gotten that out of the way, let's just say, I'm going to move to the next slide. And I think as everybody here is aware, we've been in front of the Planning Commission periodically over the last couple of years, just with this various at various different stages of the document, housing element update development and the safety element update development. As part of the rezoning processes, et cetera, et cetera, you know, so really since 2021, we've, we've, when we kicked off this effort and in the fall of 2021, we actually hired our consultant team. You know, we've been working on this update to the town's housing element, which I can't stress enough how it important this document really is to setting the development plan for many of our properties throughout town and for also addressing a lot of housing needs and starting to think about how to diversify our housing stock and be inclusive and and foster diversity in our community. So but as you're aware, every eight years, we are required by state law to update this housing element. This is what this process really started. Why we started the process in 2021. We're required to address the existing and projected housing needs for all economic segments of the town. And we're required to be certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development that our housing element is actually in substantial compliance with housing element state law. That is a process we're well into. I think as noted, and we'll get into a little bit more. We're down to sort of the few last comments, informal comments from our reviewer at the state. And we're hopeful that we'll get our certification letter within weeks of tonight. And really those last comments are not substantive in nature, but more I'll let Martha speak to this as we get into it. As part of this process as well, we've always, we recognize that to be compliant with state law, we needed to update our safety element as well. So that's this process also included the safety element, although it followed a little bit different track. The housing element timeline that's in front of you just points out sort of all the major steps along the way. Different meetings and different submittal dates to HCD. Our first draft was submitted to HCD in August of 2022. And really since that time, there's been a back and forth with HCD. As they've reviewed and provided comments, they have various different timelines for reviewing. And then we provided comments back to them. And that's been, I think, we're in the third round of back and forth comments there. I did want to mention as well, the Planning Commission last reviewed and recommended approval of a really critical piece of the housing element process, which was the rezoning efforts for rezoning 10 properties throughout town. That was in December of 2022, when the Planning Commission recommended that the Town Council adopt an ordinance and update its general plan to rezone 10 properties to allow for a greater residential density on several commercial sites in town. That was actually adopted by the Town Council in January 2023 and is now effective. So those properties have been rezoned. Those are sort of a central element to our housing strategy in in town over the next eight years. And so that piece is done, but now we're really dealing with the actual planning document and its appendices, as well as the safety element at this meeting. Those 10 rezoning of the 10 properties, as well as some other housing opportunity sites in the housing draft housing element are geared to really accommodate and ensure that we have enough capacity to meet our regional housing needs allocation of 725 units at various different income levels. And so that's been accomplished and we don't have any comments from HCD on that effort that we've done. I think further, we got the rezonings. A lot of cities are are sort of adopting their housing element with programs in place to rezone properties in the future, over the coming years. We've actually already gotten that piece of work out of the way, which has preserved our right to still have our discretionary processes in place and the design review processes that we're familiar with. These are the map of the sites that I think the commission is familiar with at the three different various density levels that were rezoned in January of 2023. The yellow just being the lower density, the orange mid, and then, and then again, the highest density and most significant rezoning project or most recent, most significant rezoning of a parcel is at the Macy's site where every time I mentioned, I just want to recognize that it is, would be a significant redevelopment of that parcel to accommodate up to 300 units. Up to 70 feet in height, we had, and I want to thank the commission for all your efforts and sort of helping us create some objective standards that would help shape that development. At this time, we're still sort of in the same place we were in January of 2023 with not much to report on in way of actual progress towards development of that site. Other than now that the zoning is actually in place and ready to be taken advantage of. Can move on to the next. And so this is just recapping the last planning commission action in December of 2022, the rezoning effort that happened at that time. And I've already gone over the Town Council action as well. In January of 2023, there were two meetings at that time, and the rezoning was adopted by a unanimous decision of the Town Council. So with that background, I'm going to hand it over to Martha, who can take it from here and talk about the housing elements, six cycle update.
Of the commission. So as Adam mentioned, the town has been working on an update to our housing element for approximately the last two years at this point. We've been very fortunate to work with Christina O'Rourke on the update, especially since this cycle included a lot of of new components and kind of some challenging things that we had to work through. So it was great to have an expert guide us through the process. So as Adam mentioned, the housing element is one of the mandated elements of the general plan. And it is the only element required to be reviewed by the state. And state law does not require jurisdictions to build housing, but jurisdictions do need to plan for housing at all the economic levels within the community. So this slide shows the five different chapters of the housing element. And I think the the chapter that gets the most attention is Chapter 3. This is the chapter that identifies future housing sites and identifies densities and number of units that will be allowed at the different sites. Another very important chapter is Chapter 5, which is the policies and programs chapters. And this chapter identifies goals and policies and programs based on the housing needs and also community input and also state law. And you know, we've done a lot of work to date to get to this point, but I think it's also important to acknowledge that there's a lot of work ahead, especially as we begin to implement the housing element. And as we begin to implement the programs in the housing element. And the housing element also includes three appendices. Appendix A is the public outreach. Appendix B is an evaluation of the policies in the 2015 housing element. And then appendix C is affirmatively furthering fair housing, which was new to this this cycle. So this slide just shows an example of what an implementation program looks like. This is within Chapter 5 of the housing element, and we have 56 implementation programs that have been added. For each implementation program, we identify who was responsible. And for most of it, it is the Community Development Department that will be responsible for for these different programs. It also identifies how the program will be financed what the objective is of the program and the timeframe for when it will be achieved. And in the past housing element cycles, jurisdictions use words such as explore and evaluate. And a comment that we we have received and that all jurisdictions have received from HCD is that these implementation programs need to be more action oriented and you actually need to commit to doing to implementing the program. So achieving these different implementation programs will be quite a bit of work. And planning staff will continue to be in front of the the Planning Commission and the Town Council over these next eight years as we work towards implementing the goals and the policies and programs in the housing element. So this year, affirmatively furthering fair housing was a new requirement to the housing element. And the purpose of this is to prevent segregation and poverty concentration and also to increase access to areas of opportunity. And most of Moran County and Cora Madera included is identified as an area of opportunity. And we worked on the update, the AFFH analysis with Veronica Tam and Associates with grant funding that we received through a grant from HCD. And the AFFH analysis is included as appendix C. And also in the draft housing element, there are a variety of programs that are geared towards meeting this requirement to affirmably further fair housing. And those are included in Table 32 of the draft housing element. So as part of the update to the housing element, local governments are required to implement a robust community engagement program that includes reaching all segments of the population. And as Adam mentioned, we worked with Plan to Place on implementing our public outreach strategy. And one of the primary goals was to connect with as many segments of the population as possible through this process. So our outreach really began in the fall of 2021 with the development of a dedicated housing webpage. And we intend to keep this webpage active, and there is a lot of great information that will continue to be on the webpage and we feel will be a great resource for the community in the future as well. There was also a six-part workshop series at the onset of the process. The first workshop was held in October 2021 and then through March 2022. And there was a one workshop on the same, I think it was the second Wednesday of the month for six months consecutively. And it was really intended to be a conversation with the community about housing. And through that process, we also identified the sites where housing was appropriate and at what density as well. We also held a variety of interactive pop-up events. And these were held throughout 2022. And really the goal of these events were to have casual conversations with the community about housing and also to engage with people that maybe were less likely to attend a traditional workshop. And it was a really kind of an opportunity to meet the public where the public was. And they were held at farmers markets, grocery stores, and also recreational events. They were one of the highlights for me, actually. So at the onset of the process, a postcard was mailed to every residence and business announcing this workshop series. And it also provided the website URL and encouraged people to engage in the process and sign up to be notified about updates on the project. So as I mentioned, really, one of the primary goals of this workshop series was to have a dialogue with the community about housing. And we didn't want to have the conversation initially be about the numbers, the 725 and where housing was going to go, but rather have a conversation about where housing made sense in the community and provide some of the requirements of, you know, why we are doing this, but also why it was important to provide additional housing. And the workshops were promoted through a variety of ways, as shown on on this slide. There are banners that we hung at three different locations, 10 days in advance of each workshop. We also used our social media accounts and did newsletter articles and also messages on the reader board as well. And all of the workshops were recorded and they are on the website for members of the public to continue to view. And in addition, all of the workshops materials were translated into Spanish as well. The town also mailed a postcard to every residents in town to announce when the draft housing element was available. The draft was released on July 8th for a 30-day public review period. And the postcard provided information on how to access the draft housing element and safety element and also on how to provide comments. And during that 30-day public comment period, the town held four pop-up events. And we were available to answer questions that people had about the draft housing element. And again, we used a lot of our our different methods to advertise these events. And this just shows some of the pictures of the different pop-up events. There are nine that were held throughout last year and at different events that the town sponsored at grocery stores and farmers markets. And one thing that we found very successful to kind of drawing people in was we had the the map, a large map printed of our housing sites, and that was we found really people saw the map and they kind of came over and started asking questions. And we also did raffles, periodic raffles, and used a spin the wheel to try to get people interested in what we were talking about. So this slide shows the number of people that we engaged with throughout the process, approximately 4,000 people. The number of individuals shown for the workshop series and the pop-up events are our staff's best estimates. Many individuals attended multiple workshops, so it's hard to know an exact number. But that is our our best, our best guess. So as mentioned, we have made several refinements to the initial draft of the housing element based on comments that we've received from HCD. And we are required to have the state certifier housing element, as Adam mentioned. So this slide shows the dates when each draft of the housing element was posted for review. Those dates are shown in kind of that blue color. It also shows when the town submitted the draft to HCD for review shown in tan. And the brown dots show when the town received comments back from HCD. So the the first time the draft was posted, it was a 30-day public review period, which was required by state law. And then for their first review, HCD hasn't had 90 days to review it. For each of the subsequent drafts, we're required to post for seven days before sending to HCD. And then HCD has 60 days to review each of these subsequent drafts. So at this point, we received our our most recent comments from HCD preliminary comments by email on May 16th. And we've made some minor revisions to address those comments, and we did have a meeting with our HCD reviewer to go over the changes we are making to the draft. And we are hopeful that this will be the fourth and final draft and that we will, we will receive a letter from HCD before the Town Council hearing. So as part of the update, we are also amending the safety element. Recent changes to state law require that the safety element be updated each time that the housing element is updated. And the safety element must address new wildfire evacuation routes, climate adaptation and resilience requirements in the safety element. So much of the new information that's included in the safety element was comes from the town's climate adaptation assessment, which was completed in 2021. And the changes again are intended to comply with recent state law requirements for integrating informations and programs related to wildfire evacuation, climate adaptation and resiliency. And planning staff did work with RJ Suko, the Public Works Director, and also Ruben Martin, the fire Central Moran Fire Department Chief on the updates to the safety element. And staff did not do a complete overhaul of the safety element. A lot of the existing text has been retained. A new text, the chapters seven and eight are shown in underline and sections proposed to be deleted are shown and crossed out. And the revisions include the addition of a new section on sea level rise and adaptation in Chapter 7, and this section describes the effects of climate change adaptation planning that's occurring in both the county and in Cora Madera. A discussion on sea level rise projections and a discussion of adaptation pathways. In addition, there are several new goals, policies and programs related to sea level rise and adaptation. And proposed amendments to Chapter 8 include new text on hazard mitigation. And additional information is also proposed on evacuation routes. And there are also some additional policies and programs related to emergency access, evacuation and wayfinding.
Want to add anything? Just on that, you know, I think it's important to note that you know, there is also about a two-year effort to get to the completion of the town's climate adaptation assessment, which at the time, we didn't really call a plan, even though it was a plan. But it wasn't adopted at the time for various reasons we don't need to get into, but I think what is important here is that we are actually incorporating many of the policies and programs that were, came out of that assessment. And that will guide our work on adaptation measures. And we're putting that into our general plan and to the town's general plan here along with the requisite environmental review that that was done as part of this project. So it is a step forward in our climate adaptation planning by including this information in our safety element of our general plan.
On May 17th, staff provided a draft of the updated safety element to the California Geological Survey of the Department of Conservation. And there was a fairly recent state law that requires jurisdictions to send drafts of the updated safety element to their department to review. We did receive comments back from the California Geological Survey on May 19th. And as part of that, we're proposing some additional changes to the safety element to address the comments, which mainly were about tsunami areas. So the changes that are proposed is a new section on tsunami hazards, the addition of Figure 8.4. And then also some two minor edits to two policies that adds tsunami to those to those policies. These, the comments that we received were provided as a desk item to the, for the commission. And in addition, the proposed recommendations are also provided to the commission as well. And these changes will not cause any significant environmental effects. So staff is requesting that the Planning Commission include in their motion to to make these additional changes to the draft before it goes to the Town Council. So the California Environmental Quality Act and SEQA guidelines requires that certain projects be reviewed for environmental impacts and that appropriate environmental documents be prepared to address those impacts. So the town determined that the project, which included the associated amendments to the general plan and the safety element and the associated rezonings could result in significant environmental impacts. And as such, the town with working with EMC planning prepared a subsequent environmental impact report. The the project included the six-cycle housing element update, the update to the safety element, update to the general plan land use element, and also the various zoning ordinance amendments, which included the rezoning of the ten housing opportunity sites comprised of eighteen parcels. And all of these projects can kind of be categorized as general plan amendments and zoning amendments. And the the environmental document that was prepared was a subsequent EIR in that it was subsequent to the two thousand and nine general plan EIR that was certified by the town council in two thousand and nine, at the same time that the two thousand and nine general plan was adopted. So the the town has made some minor changes to both the housing element and the safety element since the subsequent environmental impact report was certified by the town council in January. And these revisions do not require additional SEQA review because they do not result in any new environmental impacts that have not already been analyzed. And staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution, recommending that the town council take the following actions shown on the slide. First is to adopt a resolution repealing the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three Corder Madera housing element and adopting the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and thirty-one Corder Madera housing element. And the second is to adopt a resolution confirming the town council's findings and conclusions regarding the final SCIR and certification and town council resolution oh two, two oh two three apply to the proposed safety element update and adopting the updates to the safety element, including changes to chapter seven and chapter eight of the general plan. Then again, our timeline slide showing where we are at the process. We are here for the public hearing at the planning commission this evening and looking for a recommendation to the town council, which we are tentatively looking to schedule on June tw- June twentieth. And we are hopeful that we will have a letter of compliance from HCD prior to that that date. And that concludes staff's presentation. Adam, Christine, and I are all available for any questions.
Thank you for that. That's a lot to summarize as efficiently as you did. So I know there's questions. I think tonight we'll try to get to public comment as soon as we can. But Tracy, do you have anybody online listening? Sorry. One, okay. So I'm going to turn to the other commissioners who want to ask staff some questions initially before we really dig deep. Because there is some stuff here, but Daniel, you got a list over there. I don't know how deep your list is right now, or if you have some superficial questions you want to throw at them.
I wouldn't call them superficial, but I wouldn't call them deep either. Yeah, it's like drinking from a fire hose. So has the has or will the planning staff develop a kind of a master work plan for the programs and action items that are in chapter five? And a schedule? And is that something you'll be able to share with the planning commission at some time?
Yes, I think as a first step, we're going to develop kind of a matrix that shows all the different implementation programs and the timelines that are shown in the housing element draft. And then each year we develop a work plan that is adopted by the town council and different of these programs we will be put into these the various work plans over the next eight years. And there are, I would say, a lot of the programs are required to occur in the first one to two years. So the it is, I would say, kind of front-heavy with a lot of the programs. Christine, I don't know if you want to add anything.
Are there any particular programs that are high priority at this time?
We had, I thought we have some already established our work plan this year, which was more more of the outreach efforts to some of the maybe underserved or lower income community members who may be able to take advantage of some of the existing programs that currently exist or are provided at the county level. I think that was one of the programs that we were going to focus on. I think there was we're going to put out a newsletter or some some sort of information devoted specifically to awareness of the variety of different fair housing regulations, which also apply to frankly, anybody renting any apartment or home, whether it's an accessory dwelling unit or a small, it could be a small, you know, not big apartments necessarily, but there are smaller apartments and those individuals still must comply with their housing laws and whatnot, avoid discriminatory practices. So it's things like that. I think we were focused on is sort of take a deep breath, try to get those easy wins out there, which are just implementation programs out there in terms of education. And then start, you know, attacking some of the the meanier ones. I want to highlight some.
Like tenant protections, that is kind of a many cities in Marin County have recently adopted tenant protections and just cause evictions. I think Fairfax and then also City of Blacksburg have been working on that, and that's been something that is included in our housing element to begin in earnest in two thousand and twenty-four. So that is something that will take, you know, quite a bit of of staff time. And it's also likely a program that will work jointly with other jurisdictions in Marin County as well.
Okay. So this is going to go be our if our if we recommend taking these two elements to the council, and yet we haven't necessarily gotten sign off. What would happen if we, you know, we say yes, take to the council, and there's some additional changes between now and then?
Yeah, I think, well, one of the one thing is that I think we've narrowed it down to where we feel comfortable there aren't going to be, and we've been working with our HCD reviewer now for several months. So I think narrowed it down to a couple of just well, the couple of comments that are in your packet. And we've drafted responses and already started to have that communication with them informally about what our responses are going to be. So we're pretty confident there aren't, but but to your question, if there are, you know, we would just have to take appropriate actions and most likely what would be the worst case scenario is another seven-day review period, I think, put that back out there. If we have to schedule special meetings, we would, but I think we're really in a position right now where we're confident that that's not going to happen.
And I'll also add there in the planning commission resolution under the net, the one of the now therefore be it resolved recitals on starts on page four, but goes into page five. Essentially, it states that the community development director is authorized to make non-substantive changes to the housing element to address any non-substantive changes or amendments requested by HCD. So that would give us the ability to kind of make some additional changes to the drafts between this meeting and the town council meeting without having to go back to the town, the planning commission.
Good. The last question. What what is the tsunami hazard design requirements? Or what are?
Is that in, sorry?
It's in the the new text that was proposed to we haven't looked too closely into that. You know, I would assume it's it's the building code requirements. If you comply with building code requirements, you would would need that. I'm not very familiar with the building code regarding tsunami, but there are, you know, floodplain requirements. And I would suspect that there may be, they may be similar in, you know, buildings that can withstand flooding.
I'm just curious how a building withstands a twenty-five-foot wave.
That's good one. I does look like it's it's specific to essential and critical facilities. But yeah, I hear you. That's
Okay, just curious.
It's a tall task.
And these tsunami maps were recently updated in two thousand and twenty-two, and I think as part of that updating, it included a lot additional areas that previously were not included. And there hasn't has not been a history of any tsunamis in Marin County, so it's the the risks are probably fairly fairly low.
Yeah, I just get a little concerned, you know, that now the public gets concerned about this. And yet I don't really know whether, you know, our codes are dealing with it or not, but I guess we'll see. That's it for now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. A gentle start. Valerie, launch into what you've got on your mind here.
Yeah, well, it's still a lot to process. So thank you, Martha, for walking me through in the in the short summary today on all of the things. But I did have a question in regards to the findings. Will this be an opportunity to alter some of our findings to accommodate a little bit more of that mixed-use development for these sites? And address within the findings, the environmental concerns and build out for those as well? Just to provide a little bit more rigidity for design review process.
So the the rezoning ordinance, the ordinance that was adopted includes a variety kind of objective development standards that would be applied to all future housing developments on the sites. And then we recently did add one design review finding when the objective design and development standards was adopted. And that basically states that a project design is informed through the design guidelines that were developed through that that process. So that was one new finding that has been added. If the commission thinks there would be other findings, that would be important to add as these projects are evaluated in the future, then that could be something that could be discussed.
Yeah, I mean, it's it would be more through a separate process. I mean, one of the things obviously separate and apart from this process is the discussion we've had related to updating design review. Thresholds and findings have been discussed as part of that. At least introduce the concept of that. So certainly nothing is part of this process really speaks to that effort. There's no program or policy that's in this plan to say like we need to do that work in order to make the housing be developed. I will say there is a policy in the update to the safety element. Policy F five point three, which talks about implementation program F five point three point A. Flood damage prevention, and it does talk about some of the things we've discussed related to design review and or the planning commission has discussed related to design review. And talks about encourage flood damage prevention and resiliency for existing residential and commercial structures through the removal of regulatory barriers, including potential modifications of discretionary review processes such as design review and zoning regulations for projects that comply with Title sixteen. Some relation there to some of the things we've been discussing with related to design review at other meetings of the planning commission. So hopefully that clarifies nothing specifically as part of the housing element plan. But certainly something we can consider.
So what would be the process? I know you mentioned it would be a separate process to discuss these things. So what would be kind of the official process to go about that?
So we've had some workshops recently to discuss designer view. The requirements, current requirements for designer view, some of the development standards associated with that. I think it's through that process where the commission could could move to change some of the findings. And if if it desired as well, I mean, one thing to look at in relation to the housing element would be to sort of discuss are there different types of findings related maybe to housing that's developed on our opportunity sites as part of this or mixed-use development maybe has its separate findings or whatnot. So that's I would recommend.
Okay, well, let's just start. Great. Margaret.
Well, I have all my little yellow sticky tabs. Okay, so one thing that I'm pretty sure I know the answer to, but I'm gonna bring it to your attention on pages aren't numbered. Penalties for noncompliance and incentives for compliance is or no, 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 safety element update right as towards the beginning of the of the package.
Is this in the staff report?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm pretty sure you didn't mean protection of the rapture. I think you probably did. Protection of the rupture.
I probably did.
And and that same issue is on the next page two in the resolutions. The first whereas or the second whereas you have induced surface rapture rather than rupture. Although it is rapturous.
The rapture will go into a separate heading that we
Making sure everyone's reading these documents.
So then there was one other sort of issue on on seven dash three on flooding and floodplain management.
And is this the update to the safety?
Seven or number or page seven point three. There's a word you used, and I did look it up because it it just struck me as being odd. And it's not the best word to use, underlane. And and in air, it probably would sound better. It it just underlane is not really a good word.
What you're it's on page seven, three?
Seven dash three.
What paragraph is it in?
The very third line. Paragraph seven point three. And on pay on the page at the bottom is marked seven dash three. And and probably if you could work in another way of saying the area has an underlay of bay mud or something like that. Although it is a word, it's not the best.
We will revise that.
The rest of of what I have are not are really comments, not questions.
Okay. We'll get into comments, but I'm just going to ask a couple of questions here. This seems like a rewrite of the general plan, essentially. Is that what this is taken, you know?
Which is the housing element?
Yeah, you know, everything that's required in the actionable items is pushing heavily through a rewrite of that general plan, seems like.
I think it's just one chapter of it. It does relate to certainly land use element, which was updated along with the rezonings. So there is relationship there certainly. And then obviously the safety element, there's two chapters are being updated with that, but but several other chapters are sort of still still living outside of this massive document. And resources conservation development, that chapter, there's a cute community, open space, community design, which which I think there is some relationship here, and we've been working at the edges of that, which talks a lot about design guidelines, but we've sort of moved into a new world from design guidelines in a lot of ways anyways, so that is less relevant. But public safety obviously is is a another general plan chapter. general plan chapter. So it, while it may be the same size in terms of the amount of information as the rest of the totality of the general plan and the other chapters, it's, it's, it's actually still just essentially one, you know, one piece of a larger document. Um, but it is required to be internally consistent with the rest of the general plan. And so that's where you saw in January, the town and, and staff coming to you and recommending, ultimately the town council adopting the updates to the general, to the land use element of the general plan. Um, with, with a new land use designations for the housing sites. Um, where that were being rezoned, um, and other, um, I think updates to some of the information of that, in that land use chapter. Something else I want to add to that.
No, um, it, it seems like that when we started this process, the degree to which HCD has inserted commentary and demands and requirements goes well beyond where we started with this. Did anybody know that this was going to end up in this huge?
The law, the, the actual state law back in the, what, what, I don't know what, do you know in the first law was introduced? I think it was in the sixties.
No, I'm just thinking, you know, when it twenty thirteen to twenty twenty three, and then now it just seems that there's so much implementation required here that it's like, boom, you guys, their scope has in greatly increased their scope requirement for you guys. This couldn't have been in your work plan for this year or next year, right? To go this far. And now it's going to be a ma, a significant piece of effort and pieces that have to be brought back to us and the council. And it just kind of, it's a domino of stuff that they've created.
Yes.
A lot of this has been added since the, uh, last planning cycle, um, new requirements, especially since two thousand and seventeen. And also they've shifted a great deal of responsibility and power, put it candidly, to HCD to interpret, um, these regulations. So between those two facts and the, um, significant investment enforcement apparatus, um, you know, there's a lot more threat of enforcement from the state than there used to be. It, it, it in total generates an awful lot of work. Most people are finding that their new housing element updates are several times the size of the last ones. E- e- everyone has entered into a new world with this planning cycle. It's not just a boredom and era.
Well, yes, and, but I would say, you know, in terms of implementation of um, all of the different programs that are in the housing element, there's always been, at least the last few cycles, many, many pro, I don't know if there were fifty six. He said we have fifty six in this current cycle. There's been fifty, uh, a lot. We, our last housing element had fifty, a, a lot of housing programs as well and implementation programs. We did our best to get to as many as we could, um, during that cycle. Um, some of them required, uh, and I will say, one of the good things, we've already uh, accomplished one of the major, most significant items of, um, like I said, a lot of cities in this current cycle are putting their rezonings in their implementation plan. And so they'll get to their rezonings of these properties that they have outlined as their housing opportunity sites. They'll get to those sometime in the next couple of years presumably. And that's, as we know, the rezonings could be a major sticking point. There can be challenging. Now you're talking about specific sites, specific densities. Um, we've done that. So that's, that's a major thing even during this process that we've implemented. That be, there, that being said, I will just say, yeah, there, the other implementation programs, there are some ordinances, I think, that are in our plan. There are some policy changes that, yes, those take time and energy and effort. Um, a lot of other ones are educational and whatnot. That's similar to what we've had in other housing element cycles. Um, there isn't a, what we do is every year we will, um, create a annual, and Tracy actually does a lot of this work for us and has done the last several years. Uh, 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 an annual progress report, um, that is required to be submitted to the state. There's not a sort of the, at least not yet. We'll see when, if, if, if it, you know, the state wants to start to put into penalties on how well you're doing in progress at some point. But right now it's really a report on the implementation of the different programs you said you're going to do. There's not really a, you know, we do our best sort of thing and, and make our best efforts and good faith efforts at accomplishing a lot of this. Um, if not all of it, um, but it is al- always going to be resource dependent and other things that you just can't necessarily predict. I mean, if we get into a policy discussion around X and it becomes something that the council ultimately wants to us to go back to the drawing board, wants more outreach, you know, these things can take a lot of resources and time and energy. Um, and it may preclude you, uh, the, the team from getting to another implementation program that we did have on our work plan, for example. So those, those I think are at the end of the day, they're just the facts of how, uh, than, you know, they're of, of implementing a plan such as this. And I, I think that it doesn't mean that we're, I just, that's the reality of it. And so it's, it's a, certainly a challenge, um, and we'll, we'll do, you know, we're here because we believe in these, um, and there, these programs, some of them are requirements from the state. Others are, I think we feel genuinely, these are really good things to do to try to meet the goals uh, and needs that we have been identified during this process and we only expect to accomplish them, but you know, will, that will play out as we, as time goes on, you know, so.
What do you think, uh, public outreach consists of? Is that sort of just notifying where we stand with those implement, implementation programs? Or is it like an update on what's happening with development sites? Or what's going to be the blueprint for this so-called required public outreach that they've got in there? That's a whole.
That we have, do you, is there a specific, um, policy that you're pointing to?
No, I just saw that they, they, they said in one of their commentary, you've got to, uh, have this public outreach plan. Um, uh, and I forget which, under which one it was, but it was one of the HCD comments in the May, well, for.
The more recent comments?
Yeah, it was more recent comment, I thought. And I just thought, so they're requiring a consistent public outreach plan? Or?
Yes. Well, one of the things is what I mentioned, we're going to try to accomplish this year. I think we do have a program in there to try to conduct more robust outreach about some of the existing laws and tenant protect, protection laws and, and fair housing laws and things like that. And resources available in our community to, um, to tenants mostly renters. And so, uh, I think we had something that we would do, uh, basically try to create, uh, an effort around reaching out to property managers of our apartment complexes to try to have regular contacts and be able to disseminate information to, to those individuals. Um, but you know, that is something that just, I think we have the apparatus already in terms of our Friday newsletter. We have email lists and things that we've developed through this process with already good um, community contacts, um, that can be used for those purposes. Beyond that, you know, there's, there's the annual housing, the annual progress reports are a yearly requirement that we do every year in April. Um, so uh, anything, i- is there anything?
Okay, yeah.
And, and there also is really the, the ability to work with other jurisdictions on implementing a lot of these programs. Um, a lot of other jurisdictions in Marin County have very similar programs that we do. So there is kind of an economy of scale of working um, with other agencies. We participate in a, a housing working group where we meet every month with other Marin County planners that are, you know, doing the same work that we're doing. So there really is an opportunity for collaboration, which I think will also be helpful as we're implementing.
I think a good example of that too is the ADU Marin dot org website. There's just a lot of info, great information on that website about getting permitting and designing and an ADU and even fair housing laws around renting an ADU. And that's already done. And that was done through a collaborative effort with the, with all of the other Marin jurisdictions. So the town can just, you know, help to promote that website and point the residents to that website. And so there are a lot of programs about, you know, just doing that kind of outreach, whether it's around fair housing or ADU development. Um, home match services was another one. And that can just be accomplished through the, the town's existing communication channels. It can be through social media, using the website. Uh, one of the things that HCD likes is just, you know, take one newsletter a year and dedicate that to housing issues and highlighting all the different services and where people can go to sign up, you know, get their name on a waiting list for, um, for, uh, cer- certificates or for affordable housing units. So, so that's, um, I think the comment that you were talking about may have been that HCD wanted us to put some specific targets around outreach and I, you know.
Yeah.
So I think there are, our target, we said, well, we're going to increase the, the town's reach of the, of the newsletter. But those are, you know, they, they just want some kind of measuring stick to, to gauge the town's progress on, on the different grounds.
Thank you. And they don't give you any more money.
No.
Right.
No, and I do see, and you know, policy four point one, um, local government leadership, there's a, there's a large section on community outreach for H four point one A. That, you know, i- it's essentially, I would say, continuing the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years with not in such a robust manner, maybe. Um, but continuing to sort of build relationships and work with um, groups that we have through this process on ensuring that we're um, discussing housing needs and programs and opportunities to sort of further implement, uh, and further, I, I guess the goals of, of this plan itself. So that's how I would view it, most of our activity going forward. And I, I think we're prepared to do that, especially as we um, you know, one of the good things, I think, and important things about this process is staff is now, and, and the town is sort of uh, especially with re, with respect to the housing opportunity sites, if, if adopted, you know, there is, it's not sort of an agnostic or um, neutral approach towards the development of those sites. You know, it's really allows staff to be more proactive and engage developers, engage housing groups, affordable housing developers. Um, and try to, um, you know, attract those types of, um, uh, business entities that might actually, you know, develop this sort of housing in town and, and start to really, um, you know, see if we can't build some of those relationships in our community and, and beyond, so.
All right. Well, thanks for indulging me. Um, do we have anyone, uh, to open a public comment section, section of this? Do we have anyone with a hand raised or, uh, wanting to make public comment at this point?
Uh, no chair chase.
Okay. Well, um, then put that aside for the moment. Um, I won't close it because somebody might want to raise their hand at some point. Um, but, uh, we've opened it. Nobody wants to make a comment yet. So, okay. Moving on from that, um, it's commentary time for commissioners to, uh, chime in with their thoughts about what has to be or might be changed or see what they can persuade staff about, if anything. Um, so, um, I'm going to reverse the order here and I'll go with you, Margaret.
Oh, okay. How exciting.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so first of all, I, I do want to compliment the thing that, um, I was impressed with reading again, even though I've lived through it many times, is the public outreach that went into this. And the thing that needs to be mentioned, it was during the pandemic. And so I think that, um, it was successful, you know, through huge efforts, more so than during a normal time. And especially the pop-up events, which during a pandemic, you know, just getting people to engage, um, was terrific, really terrific. I think that I'll start by, by asking kind of a question. In a lot of the, uh, places and, and I've just marked a few, uh, a- as an example, ensure adequate provision of storm drainage, drainage facilities within the town. That's very, not very specific. And so, um, here's another one. All development shall be required to construct and dedicate to the town necessary infrastructure improvements to support proposed projects. It's, it's just not very specific. And I'm wondering when it gets to be, at what point does it become more specific?
Is this the, the safety element that you're?
This particular one is in the flooding and floodplain management, but I've noticed those kinds of sentences or, or just, uh, it, I, I'm just wondering if it ever gets to be like timeframe, ongoing resources, application fees. It's just not, it, it makes it harder for someone like a planning commissioner to say to somebody, you know, what are you doing here?
Yeah. And I think one thing to note, I mean, so the safety element, the flow, or that I'll, I'll call it the safety element, consists of flooding and floodplain management, that chapter. And then the chapter eight of the general plan, which is public safeties and hazards. So one thing is a lot of that language was written in two thousand and nine or adopted in two thousand and nine. So it goes way, it goes back quite a bit. Um, and so it had, it doesn't also worth noting that those chapters don't have the same requirements for actual timeframes for implementation as the housing element does. So if you go to the housing element, you'll see there are, and this is one of the things that HCD and their review really focuses on is what is the actual time frame for implementation? What's the measurable objective? Those sorts of things are in the housing element. The safety element and floodplain management, it's sort of a different, it's not the same rules. I understand your comment is is valid nonetheless, but we didn't update language in the safety and, and this, the floodplain and flooding and floodplain management chapter, or the public safety and hazards chapter. Um, except where it's underlined. And in those sections, I think we did provide a little bit more. Yeah, we do have for example, chapter seven, policy F point five point three, the one I read before about design review and removing regulatory barriers. We did say it's the timeframe of three years, you know, so it's, um, and, and there's a little bit more specific in terms of what was intended to be accomplished there. A lot of the other ones ongoing, you know, webs, I don't know, there's, it's true, there, that, those are going to be, some of these are just going to be ongoing work. Um, but I think this is distinct and separate from the housing element where there is some more specificity. So we're not, you know, we did purposely did not go into a full wholesale review and change and modification of the chapter seven and eight of the general plan. That was not required by state law. So we really focused and, and from a resource standpoint, focused on really pinpointing what was required to be updated with respect to state law. Um, I will say just to your point about stormwater, pretend, you know, we are, that is happening. And so it's, there is a stormwater master plan. Lookworks is engaged in that right now. Um, and so through that process, there will be specific projects that need to be done and timeframes and timelines laid out for, for that work.
I think, I, I guess, I guess my, um, sitting here and what we've seen, it reminds me of the part in, um, somewhere along the line, and I'm sure you can tell me exactly where, um, it says, uh, you know, um, horizontal development is better than vertical development. That's the same kind of sentence as this thing is. It's not giving us people who were supposed to make comments about, it's not giving us any direction or any guidance to follow. And this is the same kind of thing that, um, even this, a removal of regulatory barriers. What barriers? Including potential modifications of the discretionary review, review processes. What does that mean?
Well. I mean, it's, that's trying to actually be a little bit more specific. So these, you know, these are programs, uh, to implement the policy about ensuring existing development are resilient to flooding and sea level rise. So, programs uh to implement the policy about ensuring existing development are resilient to flooding and sea level rise. So um, that particular one, I think, is is trying, regulatory barriers are basically are regulations that require permits for development.
I got that part.
Okay, so.
Like, what does that mean?
Well, so by modif-, so for example, by modifying the discretionary review process, such as design review and zoning regulations, making it, removing regulations, letting more stuff happen without requiring a permit.
Okay, then, then that would be something that would basically be a free for all, is what it looks like to me.
It it it's, it's not getting, I mean, the idea here is not to be, develop an actual ordinance to review. We can't write that in a p- plan. But it's certainly considering the options around that idea. That's in our, that's part of the, what is being proposed as part of the safety element update. In fact, and we've already had discussions, I mean, what we've discussed as part of the design review process is just that, in fact. So we've already come forward as part of the workshops. It's, that's outside, that's, that's, you know. I didn't uh.
It's the zins one.
It's not related to uh what we're talking about, but that's not, you know, removing regulatory barriers, but but we have come and staff has come to the planning commission with precisely actually a proposal and some draft ordinance language the last meeting, that would do just this, remove some of the regulatory hurdles uh for people who are actually trying to raise their home out of the floodplain and be more resilient as a result. So this language, though, in these policies and programs, doesn't get to that level. What it does say is, that's a useful uh and frankly, you know, by by putting it in a implementation program, it's sort of, it says we should start that process of actually evaluating how to remove regulatory barriers to allow for more resilient development. Um, and making our existing development in town um more resilient over time. And so how we do that, it's not, you know, it's not laid out in these policies and programs, it's it's um, but it's, it's it's sort of supporting staffs and our town's movement in that direction.
Well, I understand what you said. I don't necessarily agree with it.
Okay.
Um, okay, and then the other, the other specific thing that I have an issue with is um under public safety again, the implementation program PSH is on page eight dash nine. And it talks about um explore ways to transport public safety employees from outlining areas when damaged infrastructure prevents them from driving to Corte Madera. And that's three years. And I'd like to see that one year. I think if people need help, they need help now, not in three years.
Okay. Yeah, I get it. I I think that's a comment on the um, something we didn't focus on as part of our work. Um, because it's, that was existing language from two thousand and nine. I think it's a good comment, but it's, again, not, wasn't the focus of our.
So can't we change it now?
Well, we, yeah, I mean, I I don't see why we can't. Yeah, it still has to be. Um, we can change it. This was actually three years from two thousand and nine when it was adopted.
Oh, okay, well.
We are. So I think it goes, I mean, part of this, and frankly, that some of, somebody may have done an analysis in the first three years of after two thousand and nine, I I not privy to, but um, if it had, you know.
And the the implement, the implementation of this program is through the Central Marin Fire Department. Um, so we, probably also would make sense for us to discuss with the fire chief, um, kind of if this is on a work plan that we're just not aware of and, you know.
I mean, I think it would be.
I think, I think, actually, we have done work related to that one. It's, it's not, again, in in, it's just laid out as sort of a policy. But actually, um well, there's different ways that we're handling that now. Actually, our our emergency operations center is actually in Santa Fel. Um, frankly, probably closer to many of our employees than to in Corte Madera. Um, but I I think that it also is, it's a fire and and public safety and how our relationships with our urgency operations center um has developed over time in the last decade, so. Um, there's a lot of information there that frankly has happened or or that that we can have a discussion on, or town council can have a dis- discussion on.
The other uh well, one, the next comment I have is more of a general comment that has to do with public safety and hazards. Um, there's nothing here that addresses um, actually a comment that was brought to my attention at the last or at a town council meeting, I think, when um a woman from one of the um area, I forget what they call it, but safety committees brought up the fact that the short-term rentals are going to present the kind of issue where no one knows how many people are in the unit at what time and where the owner of the unit is. And I think if we're going to talk about public safety, even if it wasn't in the old policy, there needs to be something here. If we're going to have short-term rentals and ADUs for that matter, then that has to be part of a safety and hazard program um and and mentioned somewhere here and incorporated into fire safety um procedures and earthquake procedures and tsunami procedures and everything. We have to know who who is where and how many people there are and how often it happens. Um.
So so something with respect to um ensuring that um uh occupants of short-term rentals have adequate information and awareness.
And we have the information about them. The fire department has to know which which depart, which houses are short-term rentals and who may or may not be there. Um, it seems critical if we want everyone to be safe in a, in some kind of a hazard, and that's exactly what that woman who stood up and spoke talked about, you know, and that's what she was worried about. Um. The other two things I just wanted to say are this, um as part of being inclusive in um and public outreach, and I, this was brought to my attention because my next door neighbor just um became a member of the Climate Action Committee. And it, it occurred to me as I was reading through this that perhaps we ought to be incorporating other people on the committees more into, like, maybe they should have gotten a postcard to say we were going to discuss something that might be of interest to them. Do they know what's are we really being inclusive of the people that are active citizens in in Corte Madera and the different committees might be interested in public safety and hazards or housing elements or something like that? It ju- just a thought. And another thought that I had was um is anybody trying to think about how the next day update could be easier? It seems like this is huge. Uh, it is huge. It was a lot to do in one weekend, in fact. Um, and and I hope that everyone is making lessons learned kind of lists and and not just, you know, going backwards, going forwards, thinking about it. You know, the next time we have to go through this. This is almost torturous.
Well, it's, yeah, I I don't know, maybe Christine, you have thoughts of that, uh about that as well, but I think if anything, it's getting more complex and challenging and more onerous. Um. Or, and you know, something that every jurisdiction, every city has to do. Um, and it it does become more involved for smaller jurisdictions because it eats into more of the, you have to do essentially the same work. Um, although I would say, you know, that's maybe our our some of the work around sites and whatnot are you know, it's maybe a little bit easier. So it anyways, yes, it's, it's a lot of work. I don't see there's uh any way of um well, I shouldn't say there's not any way, but part of it is going to depend on what new state legislations passed over the next, you know, six years, seven years. And are there more requirements? Um. You know, there's, there's, it's a big, it's a big feat um or a big task uh for all cities to to tackle this and at a lot of cost. Um, and I can't say that's uh, I I I think that was, that's the state recognize this. Um, and but I don't see that it's going away, put it that way, or or the requirements becoming less intensive. Certainly, um uh we'll do a, we'll, we'll debrief and and see if there's things that we could have done or streamlined or or at less cost, but frankly, I think um we you know, we did a pretty good job uh uh with the resources available to do a robust um streamlined effort on this without sort of incurring additional costs that may have come up from what really costs a lot of money and and ends up spiraling these things out of control is when you don't do the outreach, you don't put in the time and energy and effort, and it becomes a very controversial um explosive topic in a community that then can go on for many, many meetings and and um who knows where else that could lead with legal challenges and whatnot and you know, we're still in the process, so I don't want to say anything that we're, we're not there yet, and you know, looks on intently, but hopeful we'll be uh able to um have done our part in in helping to um uh, you know, not incur those additional time and energy and resources as a result of the work.
I think, I think the best thing that we can do for posterity is leave them whatever hints and guidance and um and help ongoing through the next so many years as to what needs to be done, because chances are, we may or may not all be here to be doing it again, but we have an obligation to leave it in the best possible shape and in the best possible uh guidance.
And and I, I will say to, this is really a credit to, I think, Martha.
I agree.
And um, there's many, many breadcrumbs.
So she can't leave. Everyone else can.
But I think if you go back and look at the record we've created in this process of how we got from point A to B to C to D, you know, and on down, it's all there. Um, and it's nicely packaged too. Um, not only with staff reports and all that level of work, but our website and the information that's contained there, which we certainly will keep um, active and and as a sort of a document for people to refer back to. Um, so I think that's a, that's a great comment and advice and and appreciate your um, bringing that up because I do think that's yes, we want to leave this. And I, we've, we've been thinking about that through this process as well as like, you know, let's try to do this right and um in the process, create the uh documentation about how we did this, so it can be replicated moving forward, given, hopefully, uh as we were thinking it it would be successful. I think we're at the point now where we can look back and say, you know, I think we've really um done something that was um yeah, I think we feel good that we've done a good job on this work with this work and and meeting the requirements, but also just doing um right by our community, sort of outreach and communication um for and uh hope that has a legacy future of some elements like this. Um, so.
Looking for you at no more yellow sticky's.
You have a nice pile over there. Well, that's, I, no, I like your comment, so thank you for all of that. Uh, it's good stuff. Um. Valerie, you've got it all in your brain because you have no stickies.
Yes. Well, I guess uh one of my question, well, not the questions, but kind of the comments and recommendations is um I'm a visual person and, you know, I'm pretty sure many of the community are as well. And I think it kind of relates to maybe Margaret's comment previously is that it's very difficult to understand how the policy is going to be implemented and everything, and maybe that's the next step to Adam's point, but perhaps um kind of have more schematic drawings of what these examples are, or at least like provide options. So whenever you talk about the management plan for the flooding, for, you know, fire hazards, to provide almost options on like, you know, at least three, four elements, what can be done? Um, or, you know, where people even need to go to look at or these things, rather than, you know, them sitting kind of underlining each word and going Googling it separately. But again, maybe that's the next step and not specifically outlined in this plan, but I, it would greatly help to, you know, even have a schematic drawing of a house and um, kind of keynote the elements of the things that uh could or needed to be changed to accommodate all of these hazards. Put it out. So perhaps that would help uh to address the, your comment earlier on how to, how people would know what needs to be done. Um, and then I just have questions and maybe um please forgive me if that has been answered somewhere, because again, I'm catching up with all of these documents here. Uh, but getting into the um the, some of the emergency drills and for the public safety and hazards, uh, page eight dash seven and eight dash eight. So the mayor radio system um is that kind of an emergency system that will uh be pop installed and will be available for the public to hear and test it regularly?
It is an emergency radio system and we participate with uh monthly meetings, I believe. Um grew up with other agencies in Marin County um on developing um that system.
It's not a public system, though. It's more for the emergency responders.
Hmm. So I was wondering, um, so one of the examples that I've seen was very interesting in Scotts Valley. They have this, you know, public announcement system that I thought is great, like during their emergency drills. Um, I wonder if there, you know, kind of are emergency drills that I do think they need to happen more than once a year. Um, that's my another comment, but somehow to connect the radio system together with emergency drills and have more of a public announcement on the streets uh because not everyone could, you know, go on the walks with their phones or, you know, what whatever that is, but just so that everyone um can hear whether it's a true emergency or the service been tested. I believe in Scotts Valley, they have this system uh running every Friday. Um, it is a little bit utopian sound, but right, but like everyone knows and then, you know, they do warrant that it's just a test, but they are testing those weekly. So I wonder if we can do something similar uh so that we can communicate with the public better. And and yes, the other comment is that it does need to probably happen more than once a year. Um, that would be a good note, at least, at least twice a year or maybe even more often. Um. And then the fire hazards. Uh, so there's all of these great implementations, and I was wondering if there are any ways to have a warning on enforcing. Have a warning on enforcing these to be included because. As we know, the, for instance, vegetation management. And, you know, smoke detector requirements, fire extinguisher installation, all of these are. I think perceived right now is great to have rather than enforcement and kind of must have. So I wonder where's the line and how to make sure that we are enforcing, you know, trimming of the trees and other things.
Things like. Fire extinguishers and fire alarms and sprinklers, that's all regulated through the building permit process. So those are evaluated when someone applies for.
For the new, correct.
Well, it's can be triggered for not just new, for also a remodel as well, will have to install.
Right, but how about the existing. Units and existing residencies where, you know, some enforcement, for instance, we do see a lot of outgrown trees out there. That are very close to structures.
There's, there's, yeah, there's enforcement.
Okay.
We have an enforcement program through the fire department and they have inspections and they do. They do it with resales, but they also do it with a. Basically, edge management program and we'll do inspections frequently, so. Yeah, that's, that's ongoing.
Okay, those are in the public safety realm there. They've, our department was, or the Southern Marin Fire was given. This took a lot of money to walk the neighborhood and give you a ticket when your tree has a problem. They're doing that now.
And there also is some additional funding available for a lot of these activities as well. As you see, I think.
Okay, well, we'll come back and see what else comes to mind. Daniel, you got your full pad of paper.
Well. Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't really have any major issues with, with the document. And I'm, given, given the process you've been through with HCD. And where we're at this today, I, I really can't see making any substantive changes to it. That could upset the apple cart. And so I guess I would say that just kudos to the staff for this amazing job getting us to this point. And I think, you know, the rezoning could have been. Could have been a really tough thing, and I think the outreach program really was a major factor in, in that not having. A lot of opposition. Particularly when you see, I think what some of the, in the press, what's happening in some of the other towns, you know, I think we feel like we're really way ahead of this. I guess Margaret's comment about not being very specific and I. I wonder if that actually works in our favor, that, you know, gives us the flexibility to respond. As resources are there and as we feel is appropriate, so may not, may not be a bad thing. And. And I would agree on. The issue about short-term rentals relative to the safety element. I'm involved in our, in our G. And, you know, we work really hard to collect data on every family and, and the block captains know every family in their, in their node. And now, you know, there's going to be potentially people. That are coming and going and from a safety point of view, from their safety point of view, it's an issue. But also, you know, we're really encouraging neighbors to be engaged and help neighbors. And I don't know that someone renting in a, in a short-term rental is going to be. Doing anything but getting out of the car and getting out of there as soon as possible as opposed to helping people they don't know, so. I don't know how to deal with that, but that, that is a real concern of mine in terms of the safety element. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. You guys should know that the. Effort you put forth to respond to the comments and then incorporate them into the. Plan is just extraordinary. I mean, Christine and yourself, this verbiage, keeping track of the necessary elements that are within each one of these categories. Requires an encyclopedic knowledge of all of this stuff that's really. Crazy making to think that you guys think all this stuff up unless you've got a cheat sheet someplace. So it's. You know, I'm sitting here going through all the comment letters and going back to the document saying, oh, they got that, they got that, they got that. So that right in front. Is the document that summarizes everything that HCD has asked for.
Yes, thanks, thanks to Christine for putting those together, the responses. Especially that first one with all those comments.
Yeah. I couldn't imagine doing that in my line of work. It's just, it's, it's really something to maintain a level head during that. It's, it's extraordinary, so. You, you've delved into everything that the town has worked on over the last years and incorporated that into the responses, so. It seems like everything is so complete in the responses. And. Since they're not listening, AC, HCD seems to be sort of this bureaucratic. Let's spit out a response or a demand from these guys and. They don't care whether, they don't know if it's in the plan or not, but they want a response, right? So you generate the response based on. What's happened here in the town and. You guys have basically raised the level of documentation and the history of the town so that it's easy somewhat to. Fill this. I, the, the, the one thing I do have a worry about is this rent stabilization program. It's coming down the pike. Larkspur is headed toward rent control, it sounds like. My commentary on that would be not a good thing. I talked to developers and they say, why would we build a building if there's rent control in a town? Why would we do that? It's discouraging to development to put in rent control. We shouldn't go down that road if possible. Doesn't say that in there that that's what they want, but.
The way we had originally drafted that program was a lot more consider language and. And then HCD kept coming back and saying, no, we really want you to say that you're going to adopt an ordinance. There are a lot of pieces where we did say, you know, consider these, and there's five different things. You know, even if it's in the plan and it says that the town's going to adopt an ordinance, not all of the programs end up getting. Getting adopted or, or getting completed during the housing element cycle. I think that's a big one. We certainly and staff recognizes that there's a lot of discussion that needs to take place around that particular program. There's a lot of, you know. I just weighing different benefits and, and, you know, different voices about what's the best path forward, so I think that's. That is going to be a big program for, you know, for the town to, to really explore the different options and come up with. Something that everyone's comfortable with, but. That is unfortunately something that, like I said, HCD really wanted. Declarative language around that, that the town will do these specific, take these specific actions to, to implement that program.
So is the view that Larkspur renters were successful in getting their rights acknowledged through the state. Limitation of rents, you know, because they, the Skylark renters got some. Acknowledgement and some action, I think by the state or somebody to keep the rents from increasing by so much.
Well, the, there, so everyone, so that's one thing to clarify is that every city right now has. Rent control to a certain degree in terms of how much the increase in rent can happen over any year. That state law that was passed, I think, two years ago, it's still relatively. I mean, some housing tenants, I think, would advocate or, or say that it's still relatively high. I think it's allows for a maximum of 10% increase over year to year. Five percent is the base and then you can increase it above that in accordance with the CPI, so it, you know. I think in that particular case, and, and I, I, I think there's still discussions being had whether in Larkspur, so I don't want to. That they've sorted this out and there's still, I think, decisions to be made there, but I understand through sort of a. Conversations with, between the town and the property owner, they were able to sort of figure out a way to reduce the amount of. Increase for particular tenants there in the Skylark apartments. Or not make them as aggressive as they would have been, and I think the city stepped in with some sort of program to help. Some assistance there, but that's still an ongoing conversation. You know, in Larkspur and they haven't decided what to do, and I think one option that's still on the table there is to put it as a. Out for a pay vote, you know, for the town as well.
Alright, okay, thank you. Think. I, I, I sort of want to ask, you know, what is the summary, but. The summary is the document, right, that you created with all of these comments in it, but is there, is there a place that staff. Feels worried about with this or that feels at risk with, you know, you've put together everything, but. Sort of you fulfill the letter of the law, but is there a place that you're saying, hey, we got a concern here for.
No, I, I, I don't think. There's really a concern. I think we, and again, the team, Martha, Christine really went through each of these. I, you know, it's a little different from years past where I think there was. I went through this once. I wouldn't say that we were just putting things in there and like trying to get it adopted, but you know, there's really a lot of thought put into each of the. Policies and programs to make sure that they were. You know, we get behind these as a town and that they were consistent with what we were publicly just talking about throughout the process. And, and that they were supportive of. The type of statements we were making. Through our discussions with the community, whether that was with. The six-part workshop, whether through the rezoning process and encouragement of multifamily housing and whatnot. Portable housing, workforce housing, the things that we were hearing, we're trying to incorporate comments as we do the process into the document, so. And that said, we didn't add things, just add things as well, so it wasn't like just fluff. So I, you know, I, obviously I think we are talking about. A potential, you know, we're talking about a plan that sort of lays out the blueprint for how the town will grow. Over. Again, you know, this talks about eight years, but the reality is given how development and how long it takes, it's. We're talking about development of these 10 sites, it's going to take longer than eight, you know, 10 years. We're talking about the next. Couple of decades, you know, but it does show how the town will grow, and I think we just all have to be prepared as a community to. You know. Encourage and incentivize the growth in the locations that I think we tried to communicate to. And got support from both the planning commission, town council. And largely the community about where that growth should go, and so the big picture is. That's a transformation of, I think, Cordobera from a planning standpoint of what we're going to see moving forward. And so when it happens, don't be, let's, let's not be surprised, you know, let's, it may not. It's always going to be a little bit of a, it's change, right? And so things evolve and, and over time. And we tried to show graphics this time around of like, we're talking about development like we see at Tamridge. For most of the sites and at the Macy's site, it's going to be bigger than that. It's going to be a larger development, so. It's not to say this is, again, it doesn't happen all at once, but this is a transformation over years of. What this, what the next phase of Cordobera will look like and feel like. And I think that just has to be recognized that this is process sort of results in that policy direction. And I think there's, we've articulated plenty of reasons why that can make sense. And is, is, is not, is a good thing in, in many respects. A lot of it has been having to do with, hopefully as others do that as well. With growth and development in the right places. Have more housing and we'll see a greater level of affordability along with those developments as well, or a more diverse range of. Of socioeconomic. Population to live in our communities that also serve our communities. And that we have that opportunity here in Cordoba as well as our neighboring jurisdictions and others throughout Marin. Entire Bay Area, so I mean, I think that's. One thing just to know, you know, I, I, I sort of think about it, you know, when that first image of. Of a developer drops at Macy's, I know we're going to hear, we're going to hear about it, but we've tried to really, we should recognize that. And remember the positive things that, and, and why that makes sense from a rational planning things basis. On when that happens and jump to sort of the conclusions.
Well, most of what you said needs to be on a video down at the mall so that people can see that and understand that.
Well, we are trying to come up with a video that I don't know if we'll speak directly to that, but it will hopefully remind us of. Of why we're doing this.
But it's changed planning and building department. You guys have a new structure. In a way that him has to implement all this stuff. It's, it's really quite defined in this document, what you guys have to go out and do now. It's not business as usual or as it has been, it's a different.
And I'll also add, since the rezoning was adopted, you know, we've been hearing from quite a few housing developers. You know, wanting to understand more what's allowed and, you know, wanting to be connected with property owners, so I think there is interest on, in a lot of our sites with. I think highlights that, you know, we, we picked the right sites for, for housing development and there is interest in the, from the development communities.
Okay, so. Any further questions or comments from anybody up here?
Yes, I just have a quick question slash comment, so in regards to the risks for the flood. Level rise due to the sea level rise. I'm, with my, my probably biggest concern out of all of that, that we're putting these housing in the very extremely vulnerable areas. And I'm sure just because the nature of our town does not allow for, you know, other sides. I'm concerned that there's just a large amount of people that will be affected by. That thing by 2015, right? I mean, we're talking about. Thirty years from now overall, and the way I imagine it, it's not, you know, coming and going type of flood. It is not a one-time instance, right? So. The infrastructure will be under the water to get to the places, right, in a way, in certain areas of. Of Cortez there, and I feel like the maps. That portray that are not included here, which would be wonderful to get to and create some visuals on what that means to have a one for point. One by 2050. I mean, there are websites that studies that, right, and people can go and, and look at it, but it just, my concern is how. That could be addressed even, right? Like this is not something that, you know, elevation of the building can solve. It's much bigger issue. And we're putting thousands of people on these areas.
I think that's, that's a, a really another good one to point out as well, and I think. Certainly, we start to get at that in seven dash twenty-five with. A couple of the implementation programs and policy five point three. And, and part of the adaptation assessment and that, these come from the adaptation assessment, so it's really about. We do have to start thinking about shoreline protection if we are going in, in parallel and in conjunction. With growth and development in Cortez, otherwise, yes, and, you know, we. Going all the way back, I mean, we actually argued. That fact as to why frankly it's. Should have a lower regional housing needs allocation number because. Those are the only places to put really substantial development part, it's in the floodplain. And in the areas vulnerable to sea level rise. So I think we do have to uh, um, uh, start the efforts. Um, we've already started the planning efforts, but start to move that process forward about how to really protect. Um, and we, we outlined this in our climate adaptation assessment, but you know, obviously using existing levees, there's um, ultimately strategies out there that we, we're going to start explore um, related to um, really, whether you want to call it gray, green infrastructure out at the shoreline that needs to be considered in order to actually allow for this development to happen and, you know, be habitated over time and over the long term. So um, so there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of work to do for sure in that respect as well.
Okay, um, are you see, is anybody stuck a hand up in the air?
Chase.
Okay. So we're going to close that public comment idea. Um, and um, I would look for a resolution or a uh, motion to pass resolution number twenty-three dash oh one two.
We, I would just note, I, I heard from a couple commissioners about potentially adding a I don't know if I'd call it a policy or implementation program related to short-term rentals in the it would be in the um, public safety and hazards chapter. Um, and so we could uh, take that as a comment if the commission wanted to add that as a um, a recommendation to add a particular implementation program. Someone could try to summarize it. Um, I think I, we did earlier, I, I think it's specific to short-term rentals and ensuring that um, adequate uh, measures are taken. And I, this is why you have some vague language, because it's hard to identify specifically what those are right now, but we can certainly start to think about what those are and need to be as part of the short-term rental a discussion and ordinance that will be coming back before the planning commission. Um, but happy to also take a that comment and try to craft something as a recommendation of the council, of the commission to include in chapter um, eight of the general plan.
So that goes into SEIR, um, the, the.
Well, no, into the, it would just go as a separate um, implementation program in chapter eight, um, under public safety and hazards. And uh, we could, we'll figure out what, where specifically to put that, but um.
So that would mean that um, let's see. Where, oh, where would that fall?
I would like to discuss it. Um, communications.
Yeah, perhaps. Yeah, I mean, perhaps under policy PSH one point five, we, we can figure out exactly where to put it in there if the commission wants to make a recommendation that staff add or that the town council consider adding um, a policy and implementation program related to specifically related to ensuring um, adequate measures are taken to um, en- ensure the health and safety, or I, I don't know, some, something about en- ensure that uh, short-term rentals do not. I, I want to try to put it in the affirmative, but I'll, I'll let somebody out there sort of take it on about what you're trying to achieve.
Uh, well, before, I want to ask, uh, and I had, I was looking at my list and I thought something's missing, and that's what was missing from my list was the short-term rental thing. So short-term rentals would, in theory, uh, reduce the housing stock, right?
No, well, not, no, not necessarily. And I think that was discussed at length with the town council and the planning commission. And so um, yeah, it, it certainly there's um, um, the discussion we've already had is that you, you, you could take measures and require these to be per- primary residences, um, and that couldn't.
Okay, separate discussion.
It's a separate discussion.
Right. So that said, then, what we're talking about then is a uh, a manner of which that uh, short-term rentals uh, some kind of uh, idea that they have to uh, notify people, they have to have some system for being in, in the community in a way, uh, as notifying neighbors, notifying something, right, somehow.
Yeah, I think the thing that we have, the um, the personnel rent person who's renting the property to somebody, uh, notify the, and if there is an NRG in that community to notify the NRG, uh, block captain, um, who controls all the block captains, head of the block captains, uh, of the name and phone number of the people that are renting so that they can be contacted. We know someone's in the house and they can be contacted in case of an emergency. So it could be an email, could be a text, could be a phone call um, to that person. If there's no NRG, I don't need notify. So I.
Well, I think there's all, it's, it works both ways, right? So the, it's requirement that the block captains or the NRG is notified of the presence of a short-term rental, uh, or occupants of a short-term rental. And it also works that the occupants themselves must be notified of the proper evacuation numbers to call and um, egress routes and so on and so forth as part of the rental.
Good point. And that could be a right written sheet that the, the, the person who's renting to these people gives them when they
Well, prominently displayed in the
Yeah.
in, in the residence.
Or even in, yes, so, so those.
I, I'm, I'm, Margaret, the other one who addressed this, I'm comfortable if if staff could draft something, go to council.
I'm comfortable with that. I think that.
We're happy to, if you want to just make that recommendation as part of our resolution.
It's a work prior experience and things like that.
So that's sort of a registration process for short-term rentals, so that then that requirement is passed on in a formal manner. And compliance is somehow.
Yeah, we, yeah.
And I think that once a home is, I don't know, certified or registered as a possible short-term rental, the public safety uh, officers, police and uh, fire department should just know that that home potentially has um, an occupant that isn't a normal resident of Cortez Madera. I mean, that that's a possibility at that moment in time when a hazard happens.
Okay, so that's a, a recommendation of a process for.
Yeah, I think it's part of the registration of any short-term rental. There's a process developed by staff to ensure that adequate notification uh, to block captains or NRGs and also adequate information is provided to occupants is provided.
I don't know who the uh,
An appropriate.
Spoke at that town council meeting, or was it planning commission meeting? She was in our, our G, whatever.
Georgian Hiddleman, she was a.
But she really did a tremendous service by speaking up like that.
Yeah, right. And, and so if, if what I, we can what I discussed and what I just reiterated, sounds appropriate, we can take that, um, we'll draft something in line with that intention and then.
That's great.
Have that ready for the councils to consider.
All right.
Motion to make the updates to the safety element based on the addressing those comments that we received from the geological survey.
And change all the raptures to rapture.
Valerie, you uh, had a commentary about uh, radio system or notification system.
Yeah. Yes, just uh, to include the public system notification with the appropriate testing done for the, for the public.
Would want to feel a little less confident that that's um, without having the response from search and fire about what they already are doing and, and how they feel about actually um, spending resources in that effort. Um, so I I'll leave that to the commission to determine if that's something that it wants to also include, but um, I know they are um, obviously, notification systems are a big part of what they do. And so I just feel a little bit uncomfortable having a staff recommendation to, if that's what the com- uh, commission um, if it's helpful for the commission without having the uh, fire department actually respond to that.
Just curious, is there, so I'm looking again, it's program PSH one point two point D, emergency drills. So is, was there something specific that you want to change in that program?
Not change specifically, but add to uh, the emergency drills is to add the installation. So that's why I had a question about the emergency radio authority, because I wasn't sure if it's a public announcement system. But for the emergency drills to have the installation of the um, uh, public announcement system to uh, have the drills peril with that, so that public is aware of what's happening. The reason I'm bringing it up because um, on multiple occasions, when we did have close by wildfires or anything like that, not every single residence received uh, an emergency station on their phones. And that has been an issue throughout, um, right? And it was a small fire that was being put up, you know, last year, uh, right? I mean, for us past, like, what's been there with us? But we uh, I was wondering if there is another ways to make these announcements. And uh, Scotts Valley is just a great example of where they actually have the public radio installed. Um, and they communicating uh, while they doing the test drills uh, to the public.
I'd prefer, I, I just take that comment back to our fire department and see, and I can get back to you, because I think there are I think they do have, uh, historically, they've had those um, loudspeakers. Um, I don't know how they're being used now or when they're being used, but I can back to you.
Thank you. All right. So that's where we stand is with the certainty of asking for the uh, short-term rental uh, then on, add on to this motion. Um, so the motion uh, number that I recited earlier, now I gotta go back and find it. Twenty-three dash oh one two. She flipped right to it, she had it. So I'm going to take a stab here at making the motion.
Okay. I would make a motion to adopt a resolution that repeals the twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-three Cortez Madera Housing Element and adopt the twenty twenty-three dash twenty thirty-one Cortez Madera Housing Element Update. And uh, with the uh, incorporating the recommendations um, made by the planning commission, um, and leaving it up to the staff to uh, incorporate good language. And or uh, language that would uh, address our concerns. And also adopt a resolution confirming the town council's findings and conclusions regarding the final SEIR and certification thereof in town council resolution zero two slash two zero two three. Shall I go on? Apply to the post-safety element update and adopting the and adopting the update to the safety element, including changes to chapter seven. Flooding and floodplain management and chapter eight, public safety and hazards to, to, to the two thousand and nine Cortez Madera General Plan.
Good enough, Anne?
Think so. Did I do okay?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush, Bush, or your?
I.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rizzo is absent, motion carries four zero.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Martha. Very, very excellent. Thank you, Anne, and thank you, Ms. O'Rourke.
Um, yeah, with that said, um, we can move on and see if anybody has anything to report up here. I don't know if anybody, any commissioner has a meeting to report on or anything up there. Daniel?
I attended the town council meeting in May sixteenth. Um, and uh, the um, it was kind of interesting, there's some overlap on items relative to uh, public safety wildfires, because um, Mark Brown from um, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority presented to the council on their activities. It's the second time I've heard him present, and, and if you get a chance to hear him, it's uh, it's worth doing. Uh, he went through all of their programs, which are quite extensive in the progress they've made. Um, so that was, that was interesting. Um, there was a discussion of the, uh, uh, a swim program at Redwood High School, and the commission decided to allocate fifty thousand dollars for an aquatics program oriented towards um, serving underserved populations for summer and Saturdays. Um, and there's a presentation of replacing uh, an out, outfall pipe for the San Clemente Pump Station. I thought was interesting is fires taking out four trees, medium-sized trees. And um, uh, apparently there was no plan to replace the trees, but the town council said they should replace the trees. So that was, from my perspective, good news. Um, and um, let's see, there was, oh, interesting discussion on uh, Mankey Park and allocation uh, uh, fees for using Man- Mankey Park for concerts and public activity. And um, the way it was worded does sound like they were closing Mankey Park, but they really referred to as closing the street next to the park for public safety reasons. And it was a fee schedule which I didn't have, but anyway, they agreed that basically the difference um, would be the public entity like Cortez Madera Foundation, um, uh, or uh, the October Fest beautification committee, that's kind of a public organization, that there would be no fee. Uh, but if it was uh, private or uh, even if it's serving the community, like the concerts that um, Zin's sponsors, they're still selling wine on the property, so there would be a fee for those kinds of activities. So I thought that was interesting. That's it.
Okay. Staff, do you guys have anything to report?
There is a public workshop tomorrow evening on sort of a uh, continuation of the reach codes for energy, greater energy um, efficiency and specifically talking about how those might apply to remodels of, of single-family residences. Uh, and also some EV, electric vehicle charging infrastructure enhancements or basically, these would all relate to um, going above and beyond what's already required by California Building Code. Um, and so that's tomorrow evening at seven o'clock. It will be an informational workshop, a chance to just get a lot of good information uh, about what the county's already adopted, um, and what potentially where the and where the town potentially um, could go and trying to get feedback from our community and stakeholders on that uh, topic. So that's tomorrow at seven o'clock. It will be recorded if you can't make it, so um, and that's the same topic that will be coming before the planning commission um, at some point in June, I think, into June.
And where is that?
Uh, it's got, it'll be right here. And it'll also be on, you know, you can zoom in or what have you, do a remote.
Okay, so seeing that, that we've. Okay, so seeing that that we've covered everything and everybody's uh. Unable to speak anymore. Pull a jury. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Ian.